For the next three months.
Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to an end. And we're going to start the meeting. Pledge of allegiance. Back corner.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberate and just.
Okay, that meeting has properly posted on the opposing places. How about?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion, a second, a discussion. All in favor then say aye. All aye. Aye. All the same side. Prove allegations to be heard. Is there anybody that's, I mean, could you look under your desk? The piece of paper that I'm making. Anybody say yes to that?
No.
Okay. Anybody in the audience that didn't have a chance, I am, want to speak? Yes.
I have a question about planning for this school year. One particular was, I understand that in terms of exposures, when there is a place in the school, as we will, there is some concern about how students and families will be notified about this context. Because my understanding, like the way that things are being structured, we're trying to avoid it in direct contacts, right? By the six foot, by the 15 minute rule, I get that. But we're also dealing with children. So how are we kind of pushing that, yeah, but are we going to be notifying the owners?
We're gonna be discussing, we can answer that question because we're all ready to play.
Okay.
So, and I think I got back to you.
Yes, and I did, it's your idea.
Okay, great, yep, yep.
One other question that I had too. In terms of, I know a lot of families are still kind of figuring out what we're doing undecided, trying to figure out what does work means. With new information, with now the plan being out, is it possible or would it be possible to re-survey families based on the fact that a lot of people seem to have changing opinions, different opinions than even a couple weeks ago? So that was something else I wanted to potentially propose.
I can answer that question. It's okay. All right.
Okay, then we are to do a nothing and email.
Okay, I know. Oh, we're good.
Okay, so we are to new business personnel actions.
So we have two resignations. Yep, we have two resignations in front of us. Would like to thank Julie Peaty for her 80 years of service. As well as over the weekend, even Zepos, like three years of service with the district. So, big thank you to both Julie and Adina for their continued efforts and service for all of our community. In addition to, we have one more new contract coming forward to the board to consider. We had to do some scheduling changes at the intermediate school. And in particular, the one individual who we had to change around was from the elective standpoint, fifth through eighth grade, as well as with the addition of some required art back to fifth and sixth grade as well. So you'll see in front of you a contract for Leah Johnson that's raised from 54% to 78% just for this year. Leah is fully aware of the increased dollar amount. The reason why I'm bringing it back to it because it's increased the contract, which should require board action as well as per. So just looking for the board to make a motion to accept Julie Peaty's presentation, as well as Zepos' resignation as presented, and then the individual teaching contract for Leah Johnson as presented.
I'm making a motion to accept those contracts from Leah Zepos and Julie Peaty. To make those separate from the contract.
Let's jump in. All second.
So we have a motion, a second, during discussion. All in favor then of accepting the two resignations, say aye.
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 All the same time. Motion to carry. No, motion for the increased art position.
I make a motion to increase the contract of Leah Johnson's for art from 54 to 78%.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, during discussion. And all in favor say aye.
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 All the same time. Motion to carry. We've got 6603 Physical Therapy with Harton Lakeside.
Yep, with Harton Lakeside, Stone Bay, Richmond. Every year, it happens a little bit ahead of this, but we finally finalized the replacement for Mary Jo at the beach. And with that, we have a contract, we have very similar to 6603 that we've run in the past, to combine together our limited EP services. We do bill directly to Harton Lakeside based on the direct contact that this person does have with the Mersey Community School District students through your IEP. So just looking for the board to make a motion to approve the 6603 as presented for physical therapy services for the 2020-21 school year.
I'll make a motion to approve this 6603 as presented for physical therapy services for the 2020-21 school year.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor then say aye.
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 All the same time. Motion to carry. We've got the student handbooks for 2021.
What you have in front of you is a student handbook, which basically would, obviously every year we do this, but at this time, we did highlight the main changes in yellow. With no yellow changes, you highlight our current reality that we're living in. What you'll find is the addition of student asking guidelines and expectations, policy for our students, removal of shared food for birthday parties and other events, and then additional transportation bus expectations, including masks and face coverings for those expectations. Just so you know, the transportation one is these guidelines are being adopted or have been accepted by all the other arrowed feeder schools, as well as Arrowhead, to be consistent with our expectations, but also knowing that we're trying to be as safe as possible with other, with the whole bus situation going on, and share buses with other school districts, given our transition goal. So I do want to make one addendum to make sure that everybody's clear. Phil did send me some good feedback regarding the masking and the face covering guidelines. And that included highlighting what the CDC recommends as a direct link into what the CDC recommends for face coverings, masks, and the fact that this is all these that have come out. So I did add that. It's given some good feedback, and it was, so I did put it in.
I'll make a motion to go through the primary emergency student handbook as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, during discussion. All in favor then say aye.
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 All the same time. Motion to carry. Okay, we are on to the district-wide facility usage for community and outside groups.
Very similar to what we did in Chul when we started to talk about, we have our exterior facilities and now we'll start looking at, is it the time and do we want to open up our interior facilities for community use for public groups such as scouts, or H, MAA, and other individuals who utilize our facilities after hours? I've been talking with John and talking with some other facility managers and things like that. What we have in front of you is a proposal to allow outside groups to have to submit a COVID plan. That would be approved through the very similar question we made. They're the only group who did a submitting plan for us for official facility usage. To be submitted, making sure what we know what their COVID exposure plan is. But to have that happen from the hours of 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM. The reason why we chose 4:30 was to make sure that we gave our staff enough time and all individuals who wanted to clear out, particularly those areas that we're looking to target for facility rental and facility use, then the opportunity to leave this district property if they wanted to and not allow people until 4:30. The areas that we are looking at, and we're looking at a very narrow scope about where we would open up for community usage. And in working with John and his crew, we're highlighting the gyms, cafeteria, and the third grade large group area. And some very condensed spaces to be able to control in and outs when we know we do need to clean those areas. It's a smaller number of areas instead of having to redo some things and having them wander around the school to use, say, a library or another public space from that standpoint, too. The conversation was, okay, what do children do if they're waiting for the scouts and MAA practice or whatever it might be, between four o'clock and 4:30? Again, had a nice conversation with Phil, and Phil highlighted is that, you know, what do we have people do? Ultimately, people would have to go home and come back at 4:30. They can sit in their cars if it's nice out or community park, that's something that people want to do. But again, we would say no to facility usage until 4:30. The board can have a discussion if we want to, and John and I said we're fine, starting at five, too, it doesn't matter. 4:30 gives us a two and a half hour window for people to utilize our facilities. We would like to recommend though that seven o'clock is kind of the drop-in time with facility usage, because that gives people enough time to get out and it gives John and his crew enough time with some flexibility of adjusting hours if we need to clean those areas that were then utilized by the community use. The expectation would be that if someone used the cafeteria afterwards, it would be disinfected and cleaned like we would a normal classroom or anything else. We just would make sure that the normal rotation of cleaning would occur after seven o'clock for those classrooms. So again, no action, just a conversation piece to say, hey, are we comfortable with opening up our indoor facilities? And if so, underneath these guidelines that are presented as a special point.
I have a question. Would the bathrooms that are attached to each of those areas that would be in use also be cleaned afterwards?
Yes, they would.
What is our policy at the end of the day, or what is our expectation at the end of the school day for students? Is the expectation that all students are leaving the building at four o'clock, or you know, whatever the time actually is? And if so, are we allowing kids to play on the playground or not? Because my expectation is that if people have an event starting at 4:30, that parents would prefer not to come to school and pick up their kids for 30 minutes. And whether we encourage them and tell them that they have to or not, you know, some people might, some people might not. So, you know, there's, I think there's probably a heightened risk of, you know, having unsupervised kids, which, you know, on school property, which, you know, for better or worse. So what, that was kind of my thought process behind, you know, having them out to be started at five o'clock or something, where basically you can have a force and people that, you know, have kids go home and then come back.
So Phil, to answer your question, we would have no direct supervision of both children after four o'clock. And to your point, we would not want each child to be unsupervised for 30 minutes by themselves in the back. Because the expectation is, is that when children walk out the door, they get picked up or go on the bus and then vacate their premise. That's always been our expectation in the past, and sometimes it's families, you know, hang around and talk and play, but it's outside and it would be just like a normal community use area after school. So, but that is a good point in order for, so we would.
Sure, but this, I mean, this year we have different, is it not true that this year we have different expectations for using the playgrounds and all that other stuff? Or is it just open for whoever wants to use it?
At this time, it's open to whoever wants to use it.
Okay.
Yep.
So your expectation will be kids will leave the building at four, they'll all go outside, play on the playground on their own, unsupervised, and then come in for the event at 4:30?
That could occur. And underneath your statement.
Long may it live.
Could occur, could be, could happen, could well happen. But the conversation. No, 4:30, 4:30 is, we're more solid on the end time right now, especially starting the year, making sure that we get everything done that we can with the resources that we have. The start time is negotiable. Again, we just set 4:30 to kind of open up an opportunity, another half hour for community use. If we feel, and if the conversation's directed, that that will create a larger burden on families, or if it's just the best thing to get kids off our campus and then have them come back. To Phil's point, it would alleviate the half hour on this, just go play on the playground or do whatever you're gonna do and come back at 4:30 for the scouts meeting or whatever.
So would it be?
Well, maybe, maybe we should first have a conversation of, do we want to do this right now to begin with? Right, do we, do we want to open up the building facility for outside groups now? Or do we want to wait for a while until after school starts, then we see how that goes?
You've already had requests for after school.
Correct, several, several.
Yep, so.
Okay.
There are families that are, or people in the community are having that expectation for Girl Scouts, those kind of things.
They're requesting, they're requesting access, like they have.
Yeah, so I mean, just because someone requests something, doesn't mean we have to do it. Right, and we need to look out for our, you know, the best, that's just our staff and students. And so that's, that's what the decision is, is right.
What I'm trying to say, Phil, is members of our community have already made requests. So we have a premise there that there is a desire in our community to continue with the Girl Scout, Cub Scout, and that one. Now, we don't have any after-school care in the building. We do, we do, we got before-school care, after-school care, so there aren't going to be children here in one segment of the building after 4:30 at Mersey Intermediate School. They're all, everybody will be in there at railroad.
Not right after, they don't have to leave the compound, right?
No, they stay here because they then are under the care of the after-school program. Our families pay for that service.
Yeah, they're supervised from four o'clock to whenever they get picked up, right? I mean, they, look out, the people come over to the primary school and walk over the little kids and all that stuff. It's not, you know, the kids just kind of free for all.
No, correct, yep.
So John, being our buildings and grounds expert, would you do anything or would the protocol be different, whether you have Girl Scouts here for an hour or whether they don't? Or is your standard of cleaning and care, no matter what, can be the same every night, no matter who's been in or out of the building?
Um, I feel very confident that we can handle these groups, cleaning. The district has done a lot to invest in equipment that helps speed up this process. And I feel very comfortable allowing a group in desert, banded areas so we can address Jennifer's concern that restrooms getting cleaned, and they have dedicated areas that they're in, so we really, after they're done, we can focus our emphasis on getting those areas re-cleaned and sanitized for the next day. This is not creating any more work on the desolate area. So the third grade area, if you have the Cub Scouts or the Boy Scouts or the 4H in the third grade large group area, we would have to do the same thing whether they were the other. So.
So there won't be any cleaning or sanitizing after school before those groups come in, in those areas?
Those areas, as soon as, you know, like lunchroom, the clean, sanitized lunch tables go up, my custodians would bring the tables down just as they're about to use the facility at four o'clock. There'll be folding tables in the third grade open area, those tables will get washed, sanitized, put away. We would set up tables that if needed to, just accommodate that among the students. Same thing in the primary cafeteria, we would set it up the same way where the amount of tables being used, they've been cleaned, sanitized, pulled it up, we would reset those tables back down as just the needs of the group. Oh, so, so I was incorrect, John, in saying that. The third grade group area would be sanitized right after lunch, right after lunch tables. So it would be additional cleaning on the custodian.
But most importantly, what I'm trying to get at too is, no matter who's in the building, we're gonna have the same standard up here, sanitized every night.
Correct, yes. Correct. Correct. So it wouldn't be a risk for the next day, it would be a risk for the next day, to make sure all the proper disinfectant.
But it would end up being double cleaning of the area because we are like a group using it and paying for the cost of those cleaning supplies as a good effort?
Could be, yes. In some cases, it will happen. Yep.
Do we have any idea what that cost will be?
Not, not at this point, Phil, I don't.
But we've always.
We've always incurred those costs.
We have incurred those costs because we've always encouraged our community use.
Well, yeah, but that's, that's not true though, right? Because we, we haven't ever done this level of cleaning and sanitizing as we're going to be doing this year.
If we did, if the board did want to kind of impose like a twenty, like twenty dollar cleaning fee, that would be something that we could do because it's not uncommon for schools and in public facilities to rent. And a lot of that dollars go to cleaning the facilities. So if, and that's something that we could revisit if we want to, or the board could decide to say, hey, let's put a twenty dollar service fee onto each facility rental per time, that's something that would be uncommon. We in the past have never done that. And that can be something that if the board wants to, as we get into the facility rental process, John can kind of keep track about, hey, how long did it take us to re-clean that area? Ultimately, it's, and it's just a conversation with guys, and it all depends on if it's the 4H and there's three kids there, doesn't take us long compared to if it's MAA and they're doing something, or a Boy Scout troop with 15 or 16 students in the cafeteria, looks very different. So that's why it's, it's tough to have a one-size-fits-all facility.
Didn't you just say that regardless of who the group was, you were gonna do the same level of cleaning though?
Correct, but three, the level of cleaning for one table is different than if there's 30 kids actually.
Okay, because you're only setting out tables for the number of kids that.
Right, yeah, and that's all part of it.
They're saying they're gonna need.
How do we need and stuff like that, too. Yep.
I mean, I, is that something that we want to do to offset the additional costs that's occurring this year? Then that probably needs to be defined now.
And Phil, that's kind of what we did with MAA. We took over cleaning the restrooms this year, and, you know, we set a fee for that on a daily basis. It'd be kind of the same thing.
Yeah.
The difference is, it's that bathroom, what's just used in primary school needs to be cleaned every day. Whereas, okay, to your point, we wouldn't clean that bathroom until after seven o'clock. Because if somebody's coming back in at 4:30, we're not gonna do a complete hundred percent disinfectant. Because I wouldn't imagine, because if we're going to, then it's gonna be double fee, then we would institute the restaurant cleaning fee. But I wouldn't anticipate us going from, say it's 4:30, all of a sudden MAA comes in with first and second grade basketball, you know, it's just a lot of hand washing or that. So we wouldn't encourage you, we don't even clean the bathroom once after seven o'clock. So that's a little bit different. We have, school doesn't use the outdoor restaurants. They're just like, yeah, you guys would, hey, great, we can facilitate charging for that. I'm comfortable with what we've done in the past, not having a fee. It's, and we do get a lot of community usage out of it, and it's just kind of a public service. We don't charge it to fund AD. We just have absorbed that in the past. Obviously, like Phil said, that this is an additional kind, it will be some additional fee cost that for us to put a nominal fee on that right now. I'm not sure I can put a number on what it would be. It looks so different unless we create a scale. And if that's something that the board wants to kind of research a little bit, you, we can come back at the end of August and have something relevant.
Maybe it's in the September meeting, we would have an opportunity to look at that and say, what is, what's the extent of this? For us, after it started, and then we can, it would need to have a charge, but we can do it at that point.
All right, and then I have a question.
Well, with those youth agreements are, happen at the beginning of the year, right? So you have to, if you're going to do that and try to, so you're gonna charge people starting in October, whenever you make those agreements, you'll have to, you know, specify to those groups that, you know, there may be a fee coming once we establish what that is.
And I think if I was those groups, I would encourage, instead of having a fee thrown at the moment and not have cost. If I'm bidding a job, I bid high for a note. If we're gonna do it here and get the everything that it costs us, I would, I would much rather take a deal like that than.
Well, and these are members of our community that we partner on, to have a very reasonable conversation. And after a month, we'll just revisit them.
I would rather revisit it at the end of September and see what.
And arbitrarily assign a fee. Some of the fees might affect the troops. Like if you were gonna do a Girl Scout trip, it's twice a month, and it's forty dollars, I mean, the Girl Scout troops won't exactly. Unless they're selling a lot of cookies, they, you know, they don't have the money right away, so that might be something.
I'm fine recommending right now without a fee. I think you need to give it a little longer than probably September. Because, for instance, I'm not sure what MAA. Uh, because, for instance, I'm not sure what MAA basketball, if, if they're going to run basketball. You know, maybe that may not start until October first.
I just, I didn't want to do it at the end of August, that's right.
At the end of August, I would.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter if the group started. Your cleaning cost is going to be defined by, you know, you're going to know what that is based on how much, so how many supplies you use to actually start cleaning, right? So we don't need to, we don't need to have groups come in and wait for that to figure out how much it's a cost to stay in the place. Is that not true?
It'd be a lot ea-, I, it'd be a lot easier if we would have a test run to say, hey, typically the Boy Scouts take us, uh, typical Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, 4H takes us fifteen minutes. That I think be even a, I think you're kind of mentioning to say, hey, if it's, if it's an overabundance of time or does it overabundance of chemical? Is it even worth? And then, then do we look at a fee?
Right, I, I just think, let's get a handle.
Yeah, but I mean, you already know how long it takes you to clean the cafeteria in the first place, right? So let's say in a normal day to sanitize the cafeteria is, I don't know, is that a half hour or is it three hours? I, I have no idea, but, I mean, you, you should be able to get some estimate of that already with information you already have.
But you don't know like the size of the groups, some groups have seven, some have twenty.
Okay, so you, you make an assumption, you say, we're going to use half the table. And then what is that? Maybe that number comes out to be, it's going to be three dollars and then we'll say, oh, this isn't worth it. Maybe it comes out to be, oh, this is going to cost us an extra seventy-five dollars a night to clean half the cafeteria. And then we should probably think about it, right?
Yeah, I don't have those.
Uh, whatever, I don't care anymore. What do we think about the time? Is, is everyone else okay with four thirty or should we do five o'clock?
I'm fine with four.
Or something else?
I, I think four thirty would be good.
Perfect, moving on.
I have a question though. If there is an outbreak at the school, does that mean those groups are no longer able to use the school also?
And at any point, we control, uh, the facility usage, uh, anytime. So if we would, for instance, if we would move from a hundred percent face-to-face model to a fifty-fifty model to a hundred percent virtual model, we would be shutting down the school. I would, I would.
All right, well, yeah. Then what happens with basketball, because it's kids from other schools, the color participation and the stuff at our school, first sports and whatnot? What happens if, if one of those kids was in our school?
Correct, and we are, we are highlighting the, uh, we're highlighting the, we're going to be taking care of that from an inside side uh, next week and in the next couple of weeks, we're going to see how things roll out, at least that's what I'm proposing to our group. But however, to your point, we do have outside group, when you think of, uh, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, those students all are not just from Merton. So I guess Jennifer, to answer your question, if we move from a phase that stops us from coming to a hundred percent face-to-face, I would look at limiting our facility rental, uh, because that means there is a community-wide spread and/or a localized spread within our school district or our community, which then to me would trigger, we need to shut our facilities down for only essential educational purposes.
All right, what if it's a smaller community-wide spread in the Richmond district and some of those kids are involved in our stuff at Merton School and our school and their school closes down?
To, to me, I would take a look at, as long as we are open, our, our facilities would stay open then in that example and scenario that I described prior. So if it's Northlake, Richmond, uh, more than likely, again, when we take a look at, we'll talk about this in the next agenda, you know, um, we will be getting some Arrowhead data and some community-wide data, which will include Richmond, Northlake, Stone Bay, Swallow, et cetera. Um, that's something that, and I guess the, the board can directly, my recommendation would be is let's keep it localized to the Merton Community School District and see where we go from there. But it's a good scenario. It's a good question, Jennifer, it certainly is. And that's why there's kind of a bigger global piece about Merton. About what to do this fall with girls' basketball. So just a consensus, so we're good with Open. Seems like the will of the group is to open up our doors, uh, four thirty, as per COVID, uh, per COVID exposure plan, then, uh, I, the only reason why I would say, you know, September may not be a good time. And I understand Phil's point for sure to say, hey, we may be able to ask her, you know, or the guys who actually do that, how many tables, how much is a car, or how much is time is a date to do certain things, but we may not know until we actually do.
Um, who is, okay, who is, so each group would submit a COVID, a COVID plan to the district, I'm assuming, to you?
To me, correct.
And then who approves that? You?
That would be me, correct.
Yep.
I have one quick question about the four thirty. So if you take your kids, so if, just using the scouts for example, if the scout leader wanted to come and say, hey, I know four thirty is really hard on the buses, don't even get home by order, maybe take your kids out. So if a troop leader wants to say, hey, I'm going to take the kids out into the field, perhaps two, six feet apart, and both you are meeting out there, is that okay? And then they can go back and do it? So a leader could, whoever is running, I could decide and stuff like that.
Correct. What I'm just trying to do is give time for our school to be unbeaten before, this, this, we're encouraging a no visitor policy. And because we know, we say, hey, if we start letting, for instance, the troop leader come in at three fifty-five and then gather, say, cafeteria, we now have a lot of visitor in- or working out. So, but to your point, if the troop leader or a parent wanted to take ownership of some students and it was okay, and do some things around the school, outside of school, it'd be no different than, you know, the public, we may utilize our facilities and.
And then we can revisit this one, it gets very cold outside. It's no longer, or is it a?
We can revisit this at any time. We certainly can, and hopefully some things would change, but given the current reality, more so kind of to Jennifer's point too, is there's going to be a lot of different things happening with our community. School board can directly do anything we want, but right now, four thirty, I think seems fair and reasonable in the foreseeable future. But yeah, we can revisit this at any time. And if we want to come back in September with some more details, we certainly can. We can revisit the whole facility. Do we need to charge? Um, I can voice a part of a new facility that may be a fee that might be coming. Uh, but ultimately, we just would have to re-sign a facility fee. Uh, but we don't utilize our facilities typically RA. Um, there is one new group that has said, hey, you know, when you guys are pretty open and ready to come in with, with an organization. Um, but pretty much we've been pretty consistent in our, our usage. We know with the, the one Girl Scout troop needs, we know with the 4H needs, we know with MAA. But MAA needs to start creating their own platform and their own guide, so they know where to. Okay, we'll follow back up in September as it relates to the facility use.
Okay, so we're on, all real, make my discussion changes, disagree with answering a question?
Sure, sure, okay. Um, two things. So first of all, from a contact tracing standpoint, and last Wednesday had another long conversation with Waukesha County, schools are going to be required to need the teacher, the chief contact tracer, when it comes to students and staff in the building. So scenario one, a parent comes to us and says, my child has tested positive. Or a staff member comes and says, I have tested positive. Um, from a school district standpoint, we then, I will call Department of Health and Human Services, I am the chief contact for this, uh, with Jay and Becca and Gail being, being backups. Um, I will call DHS and tell them you have a confirmed case and you confirm that. They may or may not have that in their system yet. But I tell them, and then from there, I begin to work with our staff, work with the bus company, find out who this child has been or a staff member has been in direct contact with. Um, again, we have cohorts of kids, third grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, so we're, we're able to trace that. Ideally, we have no direct contact here at school or direct, which is six feet or less, or fifteen minutes or more. And the point is, is we do understand that kids are kids and there is going to be lots of indirect contact. According to the CDC, if it's outside of the classroom, the health department, it is considered indirect contact. So from a tracing standpoint, again, this is where we're going to really have to train our kids and do a lot of routines and procedures to make sure that when we put down a blue dot on our school di-, in our school district classroom, we need to make sure at a minimum we're that far away from people. We will be bringing our staff in and talking an awful lot about this. And really coming home, this is the way things have to look, this is the way we have to be, to be safe, to be open. Because, to the example, if we have a, a, a teacher go down with COVID, or a teacher is confirmed with COVID, um, I, the goal is and the intent, and according to DHS, that whole classroom is not needed to quarantine. If there is a child in that classroom who confirms contact with COVID or has, has COVID, that we should not be quarantined in a private classroom because we have the facility and the class size to be six feet apart. That is the number one thing we are doing is keeping this six feet apart. This is the guidance that we're getting from DHS and from the town. Um, that is why it's really driving our hundred percent re-entry plan. Is the reason why we can do this and the reason why we're not a district like Milwaukee or Miami Falls or Deverlin, some of those other districts. Where it's a hundred percent re-opening or a solid re-open. Now, vice versa, we get a phone call from DHS that states a staff member or student has tested positive with COVID. We then begin our direct tracing, just like we would if the parent didn't told us. We would take a look at the bus, you know, and that's the one thing is, is if we have a bus ridership, that's why we have assigned seats on the bus, just in case a student gets confirmed with COVID, we are able to go to that bus and say, who is that child around for less than six feet, greater than fifteen minutes? The majority of our kids are on the bus less than fifteen minutes. So it doesn't become a direct tracing or direct contact involvement with that student who tests positive. Um, we will follow CDC guidelines as well as Department of Health guidelines. We have a letter from the Department of Health and Services, Health and Human Services, that outlines what quarantine procedures are. Um, and if you're test positive, what your isolation procedures are as well. We now are in charge of delivering that note, delivering that news and enforcing it. A little while ago, you saw that we did include in the student handbook that all students will be required to follow CDC or Health Department guidelines in terms of quarantine and isolation. So we will be marking down on calendars and working with the Health Department, saying, said student cannot come back whether they are in direct contact or whether or not they are, uh, COVID positive until said date. Now, we also anticipate being told that if they call from CDC that says so-and-so has been confirmed to be in direct contact. Okay, we may be the first time that that parent hears about it. So the CDC calls us and says, said student has been in direct contact with a COVID positive patient. They need to go into fourteen day quarantine period starting this day. Get on the phone, talk to the parent, we then get the parent here, and then we talk to the child. That's how that direct contact tracing goes. We are the first line of defense. Unfortunately, we're the ones handing out the letter from the Health Department. Unfortunately, we're the ones saying, said student, come here, why don't you pack your things up? You know, with mom or dad are waiting for you or somebody's waiting for you in, in the office. And that student would go into a fourteen day quarantine period, and that student then would enter into our virtual learning platform. We also don't know, we're still working on, that's why Gail's here. Um, and it's been super frustrating, and that's, you know, to, to lots of female, it has been frustrating on our end because the other quarantine procedure is, is what happens if a student comes to us at one o'clock and starts to exhibit multiple COVID-like symptoms? That's where we are going to be working with direct guidance from the Health Departments and from DPI about what is our procedure next? Um, DPI and DHS are saying there needs to be multiple symptoms, not just one. They are telling us that temperature is probably the least important of all of them. Hence the reason why temperature checks, no, they're not recommending them. The, the risk of congregation and the risk of close contact isn't worth finding out if a child has a temperature, that's straight from the CDC. So we are the ones who are going to be in charge of contact tracing within our school boundary. We are not in charge of the outside groups. We are not in charge of other schools. We will continue to work with DHS, but we may be on the front line and on the other line of the phone saying, said parent, your child has been identified as a direct contact with a COVID positive patient. You need to come pick up your child immediately and then enter into a fourteen day quarantine. That will be the school district's job. So to answer your question, that is what the contact tracing is going to be. Our goal is that we're not contact tracing, we're going to talk and say, said student, okay, great, does that student ride the bus? Nope, we go and have a confirmation with the teacher? No, we've been doing everything we're supposed to do. Great. Everything goes on as normal. Um, with the contact tracing, with the identifying, there's another question I'm getting is, is, Ron, are we going to give weekly updates as it relates to how many COVID positive students or staff are in the district? Um, the answer is from the Merton Community School District, we are not going to be allowed to give out that information because our sample size is such that it's too small that we might be able to identify a child or a staff member if we say we've had three COVID positives this week or ten. Um, the numbers are just too small, our community's too small, and DHS is saying we will not tell that either. And that is for internal data for you to use in making determinations whether or not we can move from a hundred percent face-to-face to fifty percent face-to-face, fifty percent blended, or a hundred percent virtual. In addition to that, Phil, however, we will, and it's public knowledge, I looked at it today, I still don't understand it. But you can find out census tracts about the Village of Merton, the Town of Merton, the Town of Lisbon, and the Village of Hartland, the four communities that feed into our school district. You can find out the number of positives, the number of negatives, the hospitalization rate. I, I can't figure it out tomorrow, somebody's going to help you figure what that looks like. They're using the Harvard model. Waukesha County just released it last week. And us as school districts are like, what, I thought you used this data? It's a seven-day book pack that is supposed to be one piece of if you have a high infection rate, if you have a high number of positives, to Jennifer's point about what's happening in Richmond and what's happening in Northlake. Those census tracts overlay into the school district of Merton. So a lot of which, which is happening in Richmond, Northlake, Swallow will occur in our community as well, because they're part of the census tract. The piece also that's going to be added is communities, we are going to be giving community data from our school district boundaries, the Arrowhead. All the feeder schools as well as Arrowhead High School's attendance boundaries, we will be given specific information on community spread as well as student numbers, how many students in each grade, not grade level, but age bands moving forward. So that information plus the local census tract, plus our local information, will help drive a main trace that says, when do we need to close? When do we need to think about moving from a hundred percent face-to-face to fifty percent virtual, or fifty percent face-to-face as well? Um, but ultimately, it's a lot of local data. And talking to Waukesha County, you have to look at your local data in your school, and you will know right away if you haven't been out for it. Um, just heard that.
So Ron, in the, in those documents that Waukesha sent out, um, at least in the, I guess it was the draft version that you had forwarded to us, they, they had the Harvard model, you know, green, yellow, orange, red, you know, breakdown. And for, I, I think it was like for orange, they recommended, you know, you might consider doing, you know, fifty-fifty, and then for red, you might consider doing virtual for like grade nine through twelve. But they didn't actually say any, or maybe it was six through twelve or something. They didn't say anything for the primary school age children. So the implication there is that they felt inappropriate to keep those kids a hundred percent virtual regardless of the rate of spread?
They, they felt, uh, the opposite. They felt that it was appropriate for a hundred percent face-to-face.
Oh, sorry, that's what I meant, a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah, so a hundred percent.
So regardless of what community spread is, Waukesha County stands as, what? What is K through fifth grade should be face to face?
They feel that the risk of exposure and spread among students who are younger within our school system. Um, and their developmental, and their developmental appropriateness, as well as for need to be in school, drove that metric. Correct. That's why you'll see, for instance, Oconomaw said eight through four is all going. Face to face, while five through twelve, they're intermediate high schools, are going fifty percent blended. But yes, Phil, you are, now, common sense kicks in, but they're saying from their data metric, that's where.
I mean, obviously, I, I don't know if it's not.
Well, you, you have a community spread versus what's happening in your school. If you've got a wide spread of COVID in your littles, in Merton Primary School. Um, Phil, I'll tell you, we're, we're, we're going to shut down. We are.
So then when you get to the level of, like, the school, right, I mean, we have a population of eight hundred-ish. Right, so then like, what is, what does a high spread look like in the school? Right, because high spread in a hundred thousand was twenty-five cases. Right, so obviously, you can't just divide that down, because if you had one case, it would be high spread, and obviously, that's not acceptable.
Well, and that's, that's why the.
So do we have different thresholds that we establish?
Well, that is what we're continuing to work with Waukesha County on. Last week, Wednesday was the first day we saw this. Last night at ten o'clock was the first time I got the data. And I spent an hour today scratching my head, how does this highway and river get into their, their metrics? So, um, I got an email out to a colleague that hopefully can help me digest this. Um, and so, Phil, to answer your question, where do we fall? Because I got historical data for the last month or six weeks, where we can see. Where our school district or our community would fall into each one of these levels. But if we're waiting for something to turn green, to your point, when you take a look at what is expected, that's almost impossible. So, uh, again, more to come on that, Phil, because that's the big question is, Ron, when is, what is the tipping point? Five cases, two cases, ten cases, is it? It's in conjunction, and you just can't look at that in isolation, uh, in regards to what's happening. The most important thing is, is look at what's happening in your school, then your community.
Yeah, local decision is great, don't get me wrong, but. Yep, because now, now it's back up to, you know, you, Jay, Becca, the board, to make, you know, the public health decision.
Right, and, and, and.
That's why, that's why I don't like, I don't know, it, it, ten cases in the school district are too many. I, I don't know.
And Phil, that's what we continue to try to work with Waukesha County on. This was very new to everybody, we were really excited. Um, you're not going to see the Minnesota model, that is a one-size-fits-all link, that the whole county goes with. That, that, that way, in Minnesota, there's a model where you vote county mile. Um, but ultimately, just like a snow day, um, the board has tasked myself with deciding when we open school, when we close. Um, obviously, you guys, given your positions, will have all of the information. To help and ultimately continue to collaborate with the board on hopefully identifying some of the metrics internal, about what it is we're looking at. But, uh, and again, it'll be a collaborative effort, to your point for sure, Jay, Becca, Lori, John, Jim. Um, and April will, will all be collaborating together with other school districts to see what's going on as well. So, more to come on this metric, because it was, that, you know, when you see final draft on it, that was the only draft we saw. So, that's just kind of how it works.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll fully admit that document was not impressive. I mean, while they, while they're taking a stance, but it was, it was pretty lack of detail, I guess.
Right, and that might have been intentional. Because they're not going to.
Sure.
Because what's happening, and, and again, because what they're saying is what's happening in Elbrook, Miami Falls is very different than what's happening in. Tellurene, Merton, Aeropel, they're, they're trying to respect local boundaries and local decision-making, while giving them. A consistent metric, at least giving us some information. And that's where, as a, as a group of superintendents, we were excited that these were starting to get some information, and they're starting to kind of help us. With this determination metric, so if we need to move through phases, we're able to have some information and explain. Why we would go from a hundred to fifty percent. Uh, because that will be very, very impactful to a tremendous amount of people. So, um, any questions on contact tracing, on information we're going to be getting, on. Quarantine procedures, if anyone needs to survey.
Yeah, I just, I was assuming that private schools and areas are. Maryland, Bucks, are going to be part of that metric.
They are part of that metric, yep. So when we take a look at, at all the Aeropel schools within that boundary, the primary EMER, uh, SINE. You've got, yep, everybody, St. Charles, in that community metric, as well as the school district metric. To help us make that Aeropel decision. So, the, the last piece I just kind of wanted to, you talk about was the virtual option. Um, so far, you're right, a, a week or two ago, maybe even three weeks, if I have to see when we give out that survey, I think in June, beginning July. Um, at that point, we had seventy-five percent of our families saying, I want to go forward face to face. Twenty percent were undecided, um, and a lot of those undecidedness were around masks. Really drove that, a lot of that. Um, also, the, then we had five percent of those desiring to be virtual. Okay, since then, we did ask our families on a survey, basically, to say, if you are SINE, we want to know if you want to go virtual. We've given the deadline of August twentieth, uh, for them to continue to think about it. Or twenty-first, I said twenty-first, uh, for them to think about it, and to, to be able to, and if you had questions, please make sure you let us know. Uh, I will tell you, Jay, Becca, and Ron's email box have been filled with questions about the Paul Reo. Hey, I just got this question, I got that, which is great, which really, really is. Much of which we publish on, on websites and things like that, which I know, I'll, I'll admit, I sent Aeropel two questions myself, and they said. They answered, they said, Ron, it's in the mind, and I said, I'm sure it is. But, as a parent, it's difficult at times to go through all of that, so we appreciate the question, we really, really do, because. We want people to make that, that good choice for their family. At this point, I sent out the virtual survey, as a reminder to say, hey, if you want to go virtual, please do so. We've got the community open house coming up, uh, on Thursday. We have another opportunity, we have online registration happening, uh, tomorrow at ten o'clock. Where families will find out which homeroom teacher they have, or what their grade level teacher is. So, because we are cohorting kids, and that group of kids, when you see their homeroom, or their grade level teacher, will travel together. Um, and so far, we have thirty-eight families and seventy students. Send out their file for virtual learn. So, right now, I think we were anticipating right around eight hundred and fifty students walking through our doors, or eight through eighth grade. And so seventy out of eight fifty represents, it's under ten percent. It's probably about seven, Phil, you got the calculator? You can do that in your head.
I was gonna get eight and a half, but.
So we're at eight and a half. So, so it's eight and a half, we're, so that means, you know, I think families are really starting to think about this as well. Uh, the, the survey, if we can resurvey, but right now, I probably have ninety-two per. Again, set, assuming seventy-five percent are for sure young. Um, then it would be seventeen percent could be still undecided, because some of that twenty percent went to virtual. And, because I'm assuming the five percent that said, I never go on face to face, I spilled dairy, Bill, no. And we know parents are still making this conversation. I know parents are having conversations.
Well, obviously, when we did that survey the first time, that's worth a thing, and so that could translate. People that were intending on going in person out of that too, if, if they don't agree with that decision.
Correct, yep, and that, that was, that was for both ways, I wasn't coming if you have asked, I wasn't coming if you don't have.
Yeah.
So, um, so I'm not quite sure from a, an additional survey standpoint, if we're going to get more information. Because we've already said right now, if you don't, if you, if you're choosing a hundred percent virtual. Please sign up here, and please do it before the twentieth or twenty-first.
So, I, I was actually admittedly a little confused about the intent of that. My understanding was, at registration, you would make a final decision of which way you were going. And that the survey, or the, the link that you would send out was basically for families to. Kind of pre-declare that they wanted to do virtual, just to help from a planning perspective. So, is, is that not the case?
That is not the case. That survey, we asked for, and, and probably can re-clarify that. We were looking for a commitment to start of the school year, virtual, if you filled out the form. Um, right now, what we're doing is, is Melissa Spitz at the primary school, and Jay and Dawn and R at the intermediate. Who are going through and highlighting, and will be notifying our, our staff tomorrow, I think, that is, that going out later, or Wednesday. They have tonight already about their class list, and about who is virtual, who has chosen virtual. Um, we have received, I know I've received one, and I work with the governor, and they say, hey, I changed my mind, we're going to come back, we're going to try face to face. Um, so we took them off the list, right, and, and things like that, so. Um, but no, that, that survey was, we were asking for a commitment, because, um. Jay and Becca felt very strongly, and I agree with them, uh, in thinking about, if we had to sign up on the eighteenth, and only gave them one day. Um, is that enough time? But ultimately, we have some planning that we need to continue to do, to know how many students are going to be virtual. In said grade level or a said classroom. Because then we can start pulling furniture out, we can start modifying, if in fact, if we're lucky enough that when Jay, Dawn, and I went through the facility, we don't need to move. You know, a large sixth grade class, you can handle it already, but, um, the, the one question right now we have is electives. Making sure that we've got enough space for classrooms for electives, uh, and Jay and Dawn are continuing to work on that, and we'll find that out too, but no, Phil, um.
Did anyone else think that, find that email really ambiguous, or was that the only one confused that's very possible?
I thought it was a predetermining, determining, and average progression, you would be making your final determination.
I think that came along, I think we don't know if that was signed up. They, they just like, well, let me know, considering tomorrow we go, like, I gotta know by, you know, I need a minute.
Yeah, that's, that's how I kind of read the whole email chain, or, or whatever, the way that information got sent out. So I guess, Ron, maybe you should send out another email clarifying.
Oh, I think.
What their expectation is for registration, that. You know, you're only taking virtual through the Google survey thing, registration is just regular old registration.
Yep, quickly, because I have a registration email already, you go. Uh, and I can do that and say, hey, here is your form to sign up for virtual. If you sign up. And you no longer want to be virtual, please contact me, and away we go. Okay.
Yeah, no, no, I'll clarify, thanks.
Sorry about that. From there, so, um. So I'll finalize that with our families to say, hey, change, change your mind, and away we go. Um, now, the other question that continues to come, I'm sure, again, is what does the virtual option look like? Again, we have collaborated, um, with a lot of school districts, we've collaborated with our staff, we've collaborated with that survey data. Um, you know, a lot of people have started to question a little bit, it's just, you know, what's your virtual model? Um, and, and Phil, thank you very much, we have cleaned up our website to make sure that this is the prepared file. Um, we have really incorporated that, that personal touch as much as we can. And I know that, uh, that that is going to require some scheduling for our families who do choose virtual. But, um, but also, we do want to work with families who think they need more some flexibility. But ultimately, what we want to have is, is we want to make sure that we maintain a high level of academic excellence. Um, and in order to do that, we really feel strongly that there needs to be that personal connection with the class as well as the teacher. And if we go back to how we did it in the spring, where it was a video, you watch it, and then you did activities. Um, we didn't feel that that would be very, to continue to do that, that personal touches, but ultimately, the accountability of. Growing that child, um, is no longer on the teacher, because now it becomes parent lottery, to say, hey, you know, how, how am I doing? My, my good first grade teacher, second grade teacher. What we heard was, is parents didn't want to be teachers, so that is why we created our platform, such that it's scheduled. Um, with our staff, knowing that we are going to have kids. That will be in and out of quarantine based on our previous conversation. That our staff needs to be ready to teach virtually right from table. So, that's why when we think about all the other options that are out there, whether it's like, hey, let's just, let, let's create an Aeropel virtual system. Uh, didn't feel like that was appropriate. We had a lot of conversations, and there's still some feeder schools that are just like, I can't do this virtual thing. I said, well, you're going to have to do this virtual thing, because it's going to happen. So, that's where, you know, we are, and the majority of it, I would say, Becca, in particular, because the littles, it's very different than it is if you're. An eleven, twelve, thirteen years old, in my understanding, but I know Becca's spending a lot of time with families. Really talking about our virtual platform, our virtual expectations, how am I going to make sure that my kid gets what they need? And that is, we are building our professional development plan around it. We are going to be trusting, and we're going to be measuring and asking for, when are you meeting with your virtual students? And really following up with all of our teachers, and, and we're creating those expectations, and find, they're all fine licenses showcasing that coming up here. Starting Wednesday, when our staff comes on the campus. But ultimately, the virtual platform is around not only teacher accountability, but student growth accountability. And we got academic, uh, academic excellence and personal growth. Um, and we feel the virtual platform that we put forward is the best option that we have. To meet our academic needs here at the Merton Community School District, and then to personally grow and continue that academic excellence. Given all the other.
And Ron, I think, your spiel sounds great there, and I, I believe you're thinking that. But that's not reflected on the website, when parents are going to research whether they're going in person or whether they're choosing virtual. The, the points I was trying to make in my email from today, yesterday, or whatever that was, but then like. You have a nice plan that's thought out, and you've thought about all these things, and having personal touch, and having accountability, and all that. And that's just not reflected in the information that we're presenting to parents. Right, the information, at least, I'm, I'm, you know, the even, the website needs to be updated, yeah, the information that, you know, there right now basically says. Eh, we really don't think virtual, and we, our teachers are going to succeed doing virtual and in person, and, you know, it, it's kind of wiggly-washy. And so I can completely understand where, you know, I've been contacting my parents, I'm saying, it doesn't seem like there's a very good plan in place. I'm really struggling with that. But, I don't know, you know, it's, obviously, it'd be a lot of work to like rewrite stuff, and make documents and all that, but. You know, it, it, it made me nice just to have a quick video of, you know, you explaining it just like you did. You know, on the virtual choice page there, just to, you know, give people a little bit more information about what the plan actually includes.
And that's really where the sample schedules be now, and that's, that's where I kept on, and this is where I've had several phone calls. Uh, Jay and Becca have met with people in person, we've taken several people around so they can see it, and that's why I get. Please do, like, for everybody, come on in and see our building's completely open here on Thursday evening, five, seven, five and eight. But, we, and, and that's where, Phil, when I sit down and talk to people and explain to them what the second grade day looks like. And how we're going to stay engaged, I go right to that schedule and say, when it's red, we want you live with the teacher.
Well, and regardless, as you put it, people have stuck in their brains the way that last year worked, right? So even when you say it's red, and you're live with the teacher, the experience last year was a great disengaged experience, even when it was live with the teacher. Right, like, we, we didn't do a great job. So, we, we did the best we could, and I get that, but there was a lot of room for improvement. And so people have stuck in their brains the way that it happened last year, and all the work that they, the parent had to do to keep their kids on track, as you, you know, highlighted earlier. And so when they say, oh, it's just all this time, you know, the schedule doesn't help. Make people feel better about all those things that they worried about from last year, right? All the work that you said now helps make people feel better, I think.
Right, the schedule fits the grid, which is as much information as the grid can print forth, which is not a lot.
Jim, for user needs, is there a way to have the schedules be on the homepage? Without, without having to link through just the COVID nineteen sites, and then go into read more, and go under schedules.
We can rearrange it, yeah.
Times are growing now. Without going into extreme detail, it's going to look a lot different than what.
Right, we used to, um, we had it on, yeah, we had it on for what's new, we had it on that front page. Uh, and then now it's just, you know, educational, private schedules, but we, we can put it on that front for sure. I mean, because that's the number one thing that we.
All right, so right, so let's chat back and tell those, because I completely understand and appreciate. Because I completely understand and appreciate the fear and anxiety that that people are experiencing because they don't have answers. And I know as parents, just seeing what the schedule looked like. I know now, should we get put into virtual? Oh, it's very clear and this is very different than what last spring.
They can do that. And it's more detailed. Well, what we'll do is, is we will go back, uh, thank you everybody for the feedback. We'll go back and, uh, see what we need to do because we have been answering a lot of these questions and it's been, oh, thank you very much and, and stuff like that. So, um, we'll see if we can add some more detail to try and get some of that to alleviate that anxiety. The best that we can. Any other questions from the board regarding the Paul Reo? Thank you, everybody, for the dialogue. Hope that answers some of your questions.
So we're on to the immediate.
Um, we are very excited to, uh, and we've been working, we've had sixteen staff members for these several months, uh, with EUA and Myron as the instruction manager event for the cost estimation. And, uh, what we have in front of the board right now is a master plan for Merton Intermediate School and then a proposed remodel for the nineteen seventy five section, which is where we are at here. Uh, moving forward possibly later next spring. Um, ultimately, if the board does choose to move forward into phase two, phase two would look like, basically, we start to really dig into construction documents. Uh, we dig into finishes, we dig into working with our staff collaboratively about what we want in spaces. Because right now, we've got a plan that basically outlines uh, a cost estimate about what a really nice fire room looks like, what a really nice maker room looks like, what a really nice art room looks like. Then we start to dig into the details. And the construction or at EUA, they then create these documents that we then take and still want to bid for with a construction manager, a construction manager. We hire one person that will oversee the entire project. And they bring in the bids and provide that too. So, um, if the board chooses to go into phase two, there would be a financial commitment to be able to do that because if in fact, we would go to bid in January and all of a sudden you don't like what it is or, or something happens. Obviously, EUA has done a tremendous amount of work. And it would be almost three quarters of the project management fee. So we'd be looking at right around seventy five to seventy eight thousand dollars to take you through up to leading the construction bid. To be able to do that. So there is a financial commitment moving forward, just like we did in phase one. It was right around twenty four, twenty five thousand dollars. But, um, after really working with it, we feel that we've got a plan that gets, but I would say almost everything we wanted going into the project. I say everything, everything, um, for a cost estimate of two point eight million dollars. Now, you will see in the, the cost estimate, there is a phase into the project. And ultimately, we have taken the academic weight of the five, six, seven, eight part of this. Just really focusing in on the intermediate school seventy five section. So if, when we would go up to bid, if that's the will of the board, we would have a bid in two sections. You have phase one and then phase two. If numbers came back too high, we could always pull back. Phase two for a later date and do that the following year or if we feel we have, it would interrupt progress. We'd be able to continue to do what we wanted to do. Um, but it just wouldn't be in the space that we're doing it in. So, so there is that little caveat that we would move this up in phase one and phase two. Uh, like I mentioned before, the project would be funded through district funds. Uh, it would not be funded through, uh, any referendum of any, at any time. We would be utilizing, and this is where we've been on April, we have Fund Forty One, Fund Forty Six, it's called Fundales, they all offset the cost of the project and really take on the project too. And then in conjunction with local businesses and some other cost of fundraising stuff, but we would not be asking for additional taxpayer dollars. Uh, we just would be utilizing, uh, basically our savings to renovate this area. So, um, so if people are comfortable, we have a conversation for a motion to approve the administration to move forward and create construction documents with EUA for the remodel of Merton Intermediate School.
I'll make a motion to approve the administration move forward and create construction documents with EUA for a remodel of the Merton Intermediate School.
We have a motion and a second during discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, then say aye.
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 All the same time. Motion carried. Future meeting and agenda items?
The chair, by the way. We've got, uh, August thirty first, we have another meeting. If, if we've got our normal meeting on the thirty first and that's a typical one and that's maybe for school starts, so.
Can we change our time to start us?
I have, I have a meeting. Seven it is.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the budget during annual meeting on the ninth.
That's Tuesday, correct. Yeah, that, that annual meeting was set a year ago, so.
Okay. And then the twenty eighth, our regular monthly meeting in our.
At seven o'clock, yeah.
Any agenda items if we're ever like to see, um, hearing none, we're on to item eleven, which is a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
So a motion and a second, all in favor, then say aye.
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 All the same time. Meeting is adjourned. We have some signatures here. I don't grab. And a sixty six, oh, three.